My Councilwoman Candace Johnson. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. My first thing is on our agenda is approval of agenda. So I'll need a motion to approve as presented or somehow amended.
Some way.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? I hear none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye as well. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is, if necessary, we'll have a 6:00 P. M. recess. And then next on the list is going to consent agenda, which consists of one item, which is the minutes of the regular meeting of June 12, 2023. I'll need a motion to accept as presented or somehow amended.
I believe that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 12.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and second. Is there any discussion? I hear none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye as well. Any opposed? I hear none. That motion passes. Next is a consider to consider the request of Hope Incorporated to close a public alley running parallel to West Monroe Street and West North Street between 14th and 16th Streets, and to consider waiving the payment for the value of the alley. We will have before the public hearing, we will have a presentation by Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been asked to prepare a staff report, which you should all have in your packet. And this is in consideration of the vacating of an alley that is in the block between West North and Monroe Streets and between North 14th and 16th Streets. That block is owned by Hope Incorporated, and their intent is to construct workforce housing on the site. The site is occupied by a single-family dwelling at this point, and the balance of the lot is vacant. Part of the area around the old house has traditionally been mowed, and the balance of the lot is mowed regularly for to produce hay. It's part of the old name that tranquil addition. And it, as such, those lots are divided up into 16 parcels, and it's zoned R3. The alley has never been improved by the town, and essentially is a paper alley only. The only improvement, when they did install curb and gutter on 16th Street side, they did add a driveway apron for that parcel to get into the alley, but they never improved the passage itself. The public, our utilities department has looked at the alley. There are no utilities in the alley that are owned by the town, and we know of no other utilities by any other agency. And so it has been the recommendation of staff that the alley vacation is compatible to the goals and objectives of the town. In addition to the request to vacate the alley, there's also requests to waive the fee to purchase the price of the, purchase the land that's part of the alley. The alley is a total of 5,100 square feet. And based on a $2.79 valuation for all of the adjoining parcels, and that would be just the land only, the value of that would be $14,220. The viewers on the Public Works Committee evaluated the site and agreed on recommendation to vacate the alley. I will let them update their opinion on the waiving of the fee. Since some new information came after that, I'll let them indicate what their views are on that. I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the property or...
So before we open up for the public hearing, does council have any questions for Woods or any concerns or?
No, Mr. Woods. I think we were clear. I spoke with you earlier, and I do apologize that you didn't get my response. There was a glitch, and it has been fixed, but we spoke earlier and I'm fine.
Good. Thank you for meeting us and taking us out there.
Yes, you and Ms. Hilton as well.
My pleasure.
So at this time, we're going to open up the public hearing to receive comments regarding the closure of the public alley. I believe we have a couple people that have checked in for this. Mr. Kegley, would you?
Just briefly, thank you for putting this on the agenda and considering it. This is going to be the first, first real presentation from Hope on this whole project. Over the next nine months, there will be more work being done on the design. You've got a conceptual design there of the layout, the three-building structure. We will be heading towards a March of '24 application to the V H D A for the biggest piece of financing. One piece of financing for some of the permanent financing. It's going to be about a $9 million project. We have a pending application with D H C D that went in April. We hope to hear before Friday about the first piece. Like I said, by next March, the big application would require the town council review, site plan review. And because this can be a low-income housing tax credit application, it will ask for town councils to joust on that. So you will see this project begin. But this is just the first step. Any other questions or concerns you may have, me or Jordan, Director of Finance, be happy to answer.
How many houses on this lot?
It'll be 30 units.
30 units.
In three buildings, 16 and eight, and eight.
Will it be to the exact chart as you've presented, I hear?
Probably, yeah, really close. I don't anticipate any major site designs. We've got paramount investment in architectural engineering already, and we're negotiating with Hill Studio as we speak. Final architectural engineering contract for the whole shooting match, because they will have a lot of work to do between now and next March, too.
It looks like it's going to be a nice housing.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is anybody else that would like to speak towards this public hearing? State your name and your address, please, for the documents.
My name is Jordan Stidham. I agree with the Hope main office. As he said, I'm the Director of Finance, but I'm also over development, and so I had a big part of this. And I just sort of want to elaborate on what we envision here as the town considers not only the alleyway abandonment, but the fee itself. With this development, as we go forward, and as we had sort of mentioned to the engineer with the town, is our goal with building housing is to build the housing so that it blends into the community and that people are proud of where they live. And so when we got with our architects on here, you'll see, you go to different areas, you often see multifamily that are essentially just boxes. They fit as many units as they can into them. And when we got the architects here, we told them, we said, hey, we want this to be an actual community that blends into the town's vision as they grow. So that's where we came up with this design here. You notice up in the top corner, we've actually building a community garden for everyone to participate in. So it kind of goes back to the point that we're trying to build not housing, but communities here. And to elaborate a bit on the workforce portion of that, this property will have a variation of units. So we'll have ones, twos, and threes. The two bottom buildings, those are actually currently designed to be single-level garden-style buildings. Several of those will be ADA compliant. And then the 16-unit building will be a two-story building, but they'll all match architecturally. And so when you look at examples of the population that we're trying to serve here, the goal, we could be down towards elderly individual that lives on disability and social security going into one of the ADA units. Or in one of the bigger three-bedroom units, we're looking at what we consider to be the workforce that's needed in the community. So example I always use is if you have two parents or a single mom raising two kids, right? So that mom could be working full-time at the new Blue Star factory, making 15 an hour, and will qualify to live in that unit. So we're trying to truly hit that workforce array down at the bottom there and to give them the pride of having somewhere to where they're like, hey, I'm a part of this community, not somewhere that you're ashamed of. So we just, we wanted to show you all the design and just project out that we're building community going forward. We're not looking to just build developments. We're building communities.
I agree. It looks like it would enhance the community.
You may know we changed our name. There's a bit of rebranding going on. Hope overcoming poverty's existence. We still will be the same, but the new name, if it's formally adopted, is going to be Open Door Community. So just FYI, if you're confused, can you see Open Door Community popping up in the rearview?
All right, thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak during the public hearing? All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And next on the agenda, council is going to consider what we just heard through as far as this consideration, and then a separate issue, then we'll take over the alley, then we'll hear from the viewers before we go on that. So consideration by the town council of ordinance number 1425 and ordinance discontinuing and vacating an alley-running parcel to West Monroe Street and West North Street between 14th Street and 16th Streets in the town of Whitfield, Virginia on first reading. The first and final, but do we have a motion?
I say a motion.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second. Would this be the first and final?
If you so, if you...
It will be. Okay.
Then we do that.
Yep. So we have the first.
First and final reading of it.
And then we... Just asking if you'd like to...
Second, yes, ma'am.
You can say. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Hear none. This will be a roll call vote. So Councilwoman Johnson?
Aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Gilman, aye.
So the ayes have it from that. Next on the agenda is a consideration by the town council to waive the payment for the value of the alley. Is there any dialogue or anything that the viewers have to say, or not sure what, so there was something different?
No, I believe that we should extend them the same opportunity that we've afforded to others to vacate. So that being said, are you ready for a motion, madam?
I am.
All right. I'd like to make a motion for the town council to waive the payment for the value of the alley for Hope Ministry.
So we have a motion? And there was no stipulation, we got motion, right?
No.
A motion. Do I have a second? Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will ask if there's nothing that in our packet, there was some dialogue about potentially if the program did not come to fruition, then there might be some payment due. Is that not what?
I just, yes, I was referring to that when I said we were going to be fair to Hope. I think that we waived and vacated for others.
Well, I'm not getting to the all. I just wanted to make sure we're doing what you two as the viewers...
Exactly. We're not going, we're going to extend them the same opportunity as we have everyone else.
And any other dialogue or questions or concerns? All right, we'll go ahead, and this will be a roll call vote, and we'll start with Mr. Gilman.
Gilman, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye.
All right, so I think everybody's excited about this going forward. Next on the agenda is to consider appropriations for the fiscal year of 2022-23 budget. We will have a staff report presentation by Mr. Stevens, our town treasurer.
Good evening, everyone. When a municipal budget exceeds the amount appropriated for expenditures of budget amendment as required by state law, we had a few unexpected expenditures for this fiscal year. Therefore, the council will need to amend and appropriate the budgets for the Perpetual Care Fund for $15,000, Whiffle E D A Fund for $8,000, and the Park Amendment Fund by $2,100.
Is there any questions for Mr. Stevens?
I credit for it. Make sure I understand clearly. There'll be credit to that in the log. Can you repeat the number twenty-one? I read it.
The Perpetual Care is $15,000. E D A is $8,000.
Okay.
And the Park Amendment Fund is $2,100.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you.
No problem.
Any other questions, Mr. Stevens? All right, we're also going to, at this point, open up public hearing to consider appropriations to the fiscal year 2022-23 budget. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this public hearing? That's a no. So we're going to go ahead and close this public hearing. And a consideration by town council to approve the budget appropriations. So I will need a motion as stated in your packet. So we have a motion that states to amend and appropriate the 2022-23 Park Amendments Fund budget in the amount of $2,100, and Perpetual Care Fund budget in the amount of $15,000, and the Whitfield E D A Fund in the amount of $8,000. That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right. Hear none. Again, this will be a roll call vote. Councilwoman Johnson?
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Gilman, aye.
All right, that passes. Next on our agenda is to consider the ordinance number 1422, the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2023-24 on third and final reading. And Mr. Freeman, I think will be present for any questions that might have a little update or refreshing, I should say.
We will see. This, I believe, is the sixth time that we've met as a, with administration and the entire council to discuss the budget. This is, in fact, the third and final reading. I don't, I don't think it will be necessary to go through all the budget discussion that we've had previously. I don't think that that would be helpful going on. I'm just going to hopefully put...
I can fix it if you want me to.
What's on my screen is not what's on...
Are you going to extend the desktop?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Are you going to extend the desktop?
No, I'm using this stuff right. It's got the first sheet. Hang on a second. Maybe we will try without it. You do have in your packet a copy of the proposed appropriations. It should have a green header. This is for the third reading, of course. I don't know that there's much else to say about it. I'll just touch on a couple of things. The total use of reserves is now... Sorry, I wasn't thinking about doing it this way. Well, just very quickly, your general fund expenditures are a total of $22,716,954. They have a matching revenue of $22,716,954. That does include a use of reserves of $1,146,689. Just stop me on that slide, and I'll hop in from there, okay? Yeah, I apologize if you won't be able to see it, but maybe you will. There is a water fund appropriation of $6,080,732. $6,080,732 of matching revenue. Wastewater fund of $4,756,613 of matching revenue. The F P A fund stands at $24,000. Perpetual care fund, $37,200. Water, $2,000. There are no proposed expenditures in homestead endowment, or we see an endowment fund. Total budget is $33,617,499. As I stated, there is a little over $1 million in use of reserves. $782,000 of that is capital one-time expenditures. That number did increase for the last time we met. We did go ahead and include the $60,000 in there for passenger van, as for the used passenger van. Previously included that as debt retirement, which net financing. Also, there's a capital rollover from the Rock House project of $125,000. We previously had that in there, $25,000, hoping to have gotten most of it completed prior to the end of this fiscal year. But as we, as we pass the first July 1, some of the work is still outstanding, so that is a capital rollover from the approved expense last year. So those two things there increased it. There we go. Those are highlighted there in that light beige-yellow color. That did increase us by about $185,000. The remainder of the use of reserves is for operating expenses. So those are all the items we've highlighted before. I just wanted to note those two changes that were a little bit different than what you'd seen before.
Mr. Freeman, that passenger van that I just wanted to go on record, I believe that is for the rec center for the children and the elderly to go on...
Correct. That is for community programs. We should be looking at a 15-passenger van. We're currently using the two old decommissioned District 3 buses that have are in various states of, I'll say, repair, perhaps disrepair, had some mechanical, and even had a brake issue at one point. They're beyond their service life. So we think we can, we think we can still run the programs that we have on the slate for next year with a 15-passenger van. So those are the only real big changes. There was a little change in revenue where, as you all know, from the real property tax change, we did a budget of three cents. It's just a proposal. We ended up with one and a half, so we modified that. So I've modified this slide just for clarification.
Do you mind, do you mind going back one slide? I just want to double-check on something. I was going down through there, and I noticed there was some, maybe some dialogue or something about some couple items that were maybe going to be cut. I just want to make sure that the windows in there for the town hall, those are in there, correct? Right, I see them. I just want to make sure those are what we talked about. Is that right? Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions about this slide?
I do one more thing. I'm sorry. In the, is the trash truck later on down the, down?
No, it's, it's, it's actually part of the financing package, so it's not...
That's fine.
It's, it's not a use of reserves. It is actually a debt retirement. Good news on that. We did make a selection on that. It sent the information to USDA today. It looks like we did, we did get three quotes. They ranged from about $280,000, $290,000 down to about $190,000. The staff actually preferred the unit, the freightliner unit with the pack more bad on it, and it's about $190,000. The freightliner is what we have now. It's a little bit smaller unit than the MAC that was, that we got pricing on. So we actually will get the truck in here for under $200,000. We had actually borrowed $250,000. So that was a development that came in today.
One more thing. Can you give me a little bit of background? I know a little bit about the Heritage Walk phase, because we will get some of that.
Eighty percent. Eighty percent of anything you see labeled Heritage Walk. Well, let me be clear. What you see here for Heritage Walk is only the town's 20% match for those phases of the project. So if you see here Heritage Walk Phase 3, $153,000, that means that that is only 20% of the total project cost, and that beat up as provided 80%. The Heritage Walk Museum connector, the $16,000 that's in there, is 20% of the anticipated engineering cost. I can't do that math that quickly.
No, no, that's fine. I just...
But there is, the full project has more cost than $16,000 budget, but there's also a revenue side that is four times more.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Mr. Freeman?
Now, these are just the numbers I read for you all that are in your packets. Nothing to appear, this is just the summary.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. So at this time, consideration by town council to adopt the ordinance number 1422 on third and final reading. I will make a motion.
I would like to maybe make a motion to maybe look at amending the budget on a couple items.
We have a motion to amend. Do we have a second? To amend.
I think we need to state which ordinance.
There are a couple things I'd like to ask. I know before, several years ago, I came and had asked a question on and had asked some question on food and litter, possibly. I feel that the town needs to pay for for cat shelter. That possibly, and some spay and neuter. I didn't really see that down there in the breakdown. Mr. Freeman, I have had some dialogue on it.
Yeah, and I apologize, Holly. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I can find it. I think it's, it's in the animal control budget. You don't have it in front of you. But there is an item in there for supplies. There's about $5,000 in that item currently. To date, historically, we end up, we end up finishing with, we've never gone over about $45,000 or $46,000. But I think what Ms. Atkins and I spoke about today was picking up the difference on what is being donated. I don't know what that number would be because I don't know how much is being donated. I don't know the value.
No, 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 no. I'm just trying to find the line item. I'm sorry. I apologize. And you said it was like $5,000?
Yes, ma'am. There should be one in there that says, I think it says other program supplies or something like that.
Okay, I've got like three. Other operating supplies?
I think that's where the food is being purchased, but I couldn't swear to that.
Because I thought, I thought the food and litter was being donated 100%.
It may be. It may be.
But I just didn't know if we could, if we could do a line item in there. And I believe that there had, also, I know that there were a couple of stainless steel, I found the word in here that I have, stainless steel cabinet kennels. I think one was possibly donated before down there at the shelter. Wouldn't mind possibly looking at probably six to help with the cleaning, you know, not spread diseases and things like that. I'd like to see that in there.
This is, you're saying, just a stainless steel table?
No, ma'am.
You're not talking about those big.
No, ma'am. They're the, they're the cage that someone was nice enough, I believe, to donate one. And they're, they are a little pricey.
They're very pricey.
But I think.
They have a price on it because they're very pricey.
Maybe $45, $4800.
Per unit.
Per unit. And you can apparently, I think, fit two. When I went down there to go visit a while back, and I think it just helps with cleanness, sanitation. I think that would benefit, cut down on disease and things like that.
Ms. Atkins, how many did you say you thought you needed?
Maybe six.
And how many are there down there?
There's one. And from what I understand, from when I did, went and did like a tour, that I believe somebody donated that. I'm not 100% sure.
I do. I do. I believe that.
No, no. Well, I mean, well, right, and I don't want to misspeak. I don't want the town to have maybe paid half. I don't want, you know, I don't know 100%. But from my understanding, I think it is donated.
Is there, is there an amount for food and litter that you would propose that as sort of a starting point?
Honestly, I have no idea.
Well, I'm, I don't think any of us actually know. What I'm asking is, is there just a ballpark number that we could consider as a starting point for the whole council's consideration as, to add as a line item? Because without a value, it's going to be difficult for us. I don't know how to make a motion without a value.
Well, if either one way or the other, we could either spend that amount. We don't have to spend it. But if we go over, then maybe the people continue to donate the food and litter. But maybe if we just go through a set amount to try to get a more accurate amount to deal with for next year, just to see.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm getting at, is if there's an amount we can kind of start with and then just for their, so everyone can have something to consider.
Anyone out there have any ideas that Ms. Holton's like?
Sorry, I'm not much.
And I'm sorry too, because I know what I've been. That seems like an army at my house.
I do know that, and I don't know to what level this happens. I do know that there are some stores in the community that when they get bags bussed and things like that, sometimes I know that they give them to us. But I don't know how often that happens or how much that offsets the other donations that are coming in, but.
Well, if we want to look here, maybe the other operating supplies, what about, do you want to go with at least $3,000 to try to get a figure in there?
I'll take your lead.
Sorry, $3,000. And then we may not spend that, but it's just a good start to.
All right, so what I mean, we have a motion to amend with, for $3,000 for food and.
Litter, yes, ma'am.
Just for food and litter.
Can you make that one line item and maybe do a total of five and do spay and neuter as well? Or would that fall under education down here somewhere?
I don't think, I think education would be primarily for training for the ECOs.
Okay. I would like to amend it to do $5,000 for food, litter, spay and neuter. And whether or not that be education to try to educate, you know, the public.
I would like to.
How for that right? Yes, sir.
And then the cats.
Yes, sir.
Which, if they're $4,800 apiece, I think you're talking about $25,000, $24,000 approximately.
Those are the, some of the town animal veterinarians who do the spay and stuff.
I believe some do. I'm not exactly 100%. I think that you may have to be maybe at a certain amount of income, you know, to qualify for that program, depending on whether or not you send to Margaret Mitchell or, you know, wherever you send it, wherever you send your animal in cattle box or something. We were just talking about the cat shelter.
But if this is for the shelter.
Right, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you want to put that together in a motion?
Yes, ma'am, if you don't mind. I'd like to see $5,000 for the food, litter, spay, neuter. We're in about education to try to educate people, spay and neuter their pets, to try to cut down population. And also for the six cabinets, stainless steel cat kennels. Try to bring that upgraded a little bit.
You, I think you said we had one, but we needed six totals, so it would be five.
I think we have one, or what would possibly fit in there. There may just be five that we'd be able to fit in there. But I think it would maybe help, instead of trying to clean the wire cages and different things like that. I do know that they are up on tables. But I think that might would be better to help cut down on diseases and different things like that.
I have a question. Did the staff not ask for cabinets when they made their budget?
I have not seen that.
Okay.
It doesn't mean I, I'm not saying I don't think they would.
If they felt the need, I believe they would have put it in their budget.
Well, that's not what I was going to say. I was just going to say if it improves their processes, I'm sure they would enjoy having them. But I don't know why they did or didn't ask for them, but.
And it might be a little different term than maybe enjoy, maybe it would help, you know, like I said, cut down on disease and maybe help people do their job, you know, cleanliness and things like that, instead of, I clean numerous, you know, wire, correct cages and things like that. And, you know, it just may help make their job a little easier.
All right, so we have a motion. Before we have any further dialogue, we need a second. So I'm not hearing a second. So that motion does not pass? It does. It dies.
Well, thank you all for at least listening.
All right, so then we're back to the consideration by town council to adopt ordinance number 1422 on third and final reading. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I move.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, second. Any further dialogue?
I am not in agreement with the budget. I disagree with several things, so, and I'll say I'm not in agreement with your budget.
Any other dialogue?
Actually, I'm not either. I would like something to be considered and looked at. Whether, I know it'll probably go through, but I would like, I do know we did the Bolton study. I do know we did do that. I think there are some salaries that do need to be looked at. If they can go through, I don't know if Mr. Freeman, I know we've had a little dialogue on that as well, but maybe you and I can get together on that one sheet and look, or if, if anybody else wants to look, or how can we, you know, do that. That's one thing I don't agree with as well.
I would like to look at that myself. I'm not in agreement with some of the salaries.
To be clear, you all were provided with those before, long before you were asked to vote on them, correct?
We were.
I just want to be clear.
Right, and you and I have, we've had some conversation on that as well.
I made mention of some of those previously, and you said what you wanted to say. And I don't agree with it. And I don't have to agree with it.
I understand.
Okay, so I'm not in agreement with your budget.
I just wanted to make it clear that you all did receive all that information before voting.
No, I didn't receive a line-by-line item budget. I didn't receive that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about Bolton study.
Bolton study and your line-by-line budget. I didn't receive that either. I got the Bolton study. I didn't get the line-by-line.
I wasn't saying.
Yeah, I didn't see it. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I do want to ask if that, can that be looked at after, I mean, after the fact? I'd like to.
It can, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm, I'm trying to be, we have to be really careful, okay? If this thing is like a ball of yarn, you start pulling at it and we'll end up going through the whole thing because everything is relative. Everything is relative to your position in the organization, how those positions are paid by the market, how those are compared from different levels of the organization. And it's all relative. When you start just handpicking out a few that were all looked at comprehensively in the same context, it threatens to put us in a situation where you'll just never stop. You'll just never stop. What I'm getting at is, and I don't mean you all will never stop, I just mean you'll never get to the end of that ball of yarn. It just, it's like a Rubik's Cube. You can't move the yellow square without moving a red one and a blue one and a green one. It, that's all I mean. It's, sure, we can take a look at. I just don't want to overpromise that we're going to come up with these perfect solutions to every one of them. I'm happy to look at it again. I just, I just think that you got to, please appreciate that it is a complex matter. That's why we paid a third party to take it out of my hands, to take it out of our hands, to say, give us an equitable, market-based summation of what these positions pay relative to contribution, relative to required job requirements, relative to all these other compensatory factors.
And we followed Bolton by the T.
No, no, you can't. You can't.
I just, I just would like to relook at it. And you and I, like I said, I would, I would like to relook at it and look at it again.
I think we need to go ahead and finish this motion and vote. We have a motion and a second. And we've had a good dialogue. So it's going to be a roll call vote. Mr. Gilman?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, no.
Johnson, no.
Very much. Moving on, consider ordinance number 1424 and ordinance amending and reenacting Chapter 12 Solid Waste Collection and Disposal, Article 6 Nuisances on Premises, Removal of Weeds, mowing, et cetera, and cluttering Division 2, removal of weeds, mowing, et cetera, by amending Section 3-92, excessive vegetation overgrowth, and by amendment 12.94, moment exceptions of the code of the time of withdrawal, and first and final reading. I believe we have a little report by Assistant Town Manager.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In your packets, under Section 8D, you have a draft of ordinance 1424. After this presentation, the next item on your agenda is for town council to consider a motion and a vote to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 12, Sections 12.92 through 12.94. On April the 24th, the town council passed ordinance 1420, which repealed and replaced the entire Chapter 12 relating to solid waste, nuisance, clutter, and mowing of grass. In April, the primary reason for modifying Chapter 12 was in relationship to the need for new language related to clutter and nuisance. However, because the entire Chapter 12 was under review at that time, the mowing requirement received a systemic review and rewrite by the town attorney in coordination with the public works department. The chapter was restructured with the intent to make this chapter easier to read, communicate, and enforce. Shortly after the adoption of Chapter 12, town staff became aware that this section regarding mowing exemption for agricultural properties was not carried over into the newly adopted language for Chapter 12. As a result, town staff met on several occasions to prepare a revised draft of the mowing statute, which now includes the agricultural exemption. The current rewrite of this section was used to clarify the exemption for agriculture-zoned properties and to further clarify the exemption for properties that are not zoned agriculture, but used for agricultural operations. While we were at it, we reviewed the section for compliance with the Enabling Statute of Virginia Code 15.2901. And because the Enabling Statute does not specifically mention nuisance trees, the section relating to trees as a nuisance were removed from your most recent draft. And you all have the most recent draft in your packets, and the changed versions are highlighted and yellowed. It shall be noted that the Enabling State Statute does not enable locality to enforce mowing for properties and agricultural operation. This supported our work in bringing the amended version to you this evening. In summary, the major changes that you see tonight are intended to clarify the mowing exemption for those properties which are currently engaged in active agricultural operations. We are confident that this revision meets the intent of 15.2901, while also meeting the needs of the agricultural community. I would like to thank Town Clerk Sherry Corvin, Town Manager Brian Freeman, and the Director of Public Works, Mr. Chris Peoples, for the work on the most recent draft of Chapter 12, Section 12.92 through 12.94. Do you have any questions? Staff is here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Holton?
I do. Actually, who actually goes out and, I guess, measures the grass? Who would actually do that?
The Director of Public Works.
Well, typically, I think that's true. If there's, it's usually complaint-based. Or when we were using a contractor primarily, one of the easy things about it is that typically repeat offenders, there are some people that have basically let us mow their lots for years. So they would basically know where to go and look for those. And then the contractor would, would measure and usually take before and after pictures to, before they would bill us for the work. So that's kind of how that would go. Typically, the contractor would do that. Public Works is doing more of that this year, and in the budget, we did reduce at their request the amount paid to contractors for mowing. So moving forward, or at least for the next budget cycle, it looks like Public Works will be doing it.
Do they have employee, enough employees to do that, to make sure the jobs are done?
It was their request. It was their request.
Is there, I know we used to have dates in there. I know people, some maybe didn't like the dates. I would like to see it mowed a little bit better. I know that we went and looked at the vacant lot. It was probably well past. I just don't want to, I just don't want to fall in between and let these lots start getting huge because of the neighborhood beside. I know some of them may be considered, you know, hay and things like that. But I would like to stay on this because I know a couple of years past, it was just sort of like, shelter, shelter, you know, you just mow when you want to. of like, shelter, shelter, you know, you just mow when you want to. It wasn't mowed in a timely manner.
I think the lot you're referring to was a, was a hay situation, and it would still get, if it applied for the hay exemption, it's historically been made for hay. It's the lot we looked at, I think, earlier, correct?
Right, yes, sir. But I'm talking about, like, in the past, when, when they haven't been mowed in a timely manner, and then, like, the contractors supposedly weren't basically, you know, getting the mowed in a timely manner. I just didn't know if we could add some type of stipulation.
So I think this is like a lot of situations where you have to appreciate the gray. If there's a mowing deadline of, say, May the 15th, we cannot mow them before May 18th, but on May 18th, if there's 75 of them to mow, it's not going to happen instantaneously.
I don't expect it to, sir.
But I just wanted to clear, like I said, you gotta, gotta appreciate the gray on some of this, where there is a threshold that gets passed, now you're in violation, but it still takes us time to work through the violators, and it always, I mean, if you've got 70 or 80 to mow, that's just, that's, that's a lot. And they're, and like you said, they're in, it's not like mowing 80 lawns that are six inches and you're trying to make them three. It's mowing, you know, 24 inches of grass and knocking it down, and it's, it's a, it-
Well, I just, I just know before in years past, we, we've not made our own ordinance, and I just, I don't want to see that happen. Is there any way that we can add something in there for lots that we're not familiar with, who actually owns them, or alleyways, and put some type of stipulation in there? For instance, the one I've, we've talked about numerous, probably over two years, behind where Ken's used to be.
Yeah.
I'd like to add some type of wording that that needs to be taken care of. You know, situations like, like that. We just really can't do anything about them because we don't know who, you know, where to send the bill to, or who to send the letter to, or information to, or contact to.
Well, I know what the situation you're talking about, but even if we had it in the ordinance, if we don't know who the bill goes to, it's, it's unenforceable if you don't have a party to assign responsibility. So I'm not sure how I would, we would write that in.
So just go ahead and continue. It looks like a mess.
No, no, no. Let me, let me try to restate that. If, we, I don't know how to write language into the ordinance that says, we're gonna, even if, if we don't know who you are, we're gonna, we're gonna mow your alley, and here's the consequences. You know what I'm saying? Like, it already, it already says you have to.
But for, for a long time, sir, have, can we hold off on, is there any way we can hold off on this until we can sort of-
It hasn't, Holly, because we, there, there is no parcel number. There is no ownership. We've been doing deed research back 150 years to figure out who owns the situation you're talking about. We can hold off on this if that's satisfactory, but I don't, I don't think that that's going to clear up the situation you're talking about. It, it, it's, it's a legal matter of ownership that is this puzzle that we're trying to sort out, not whether or not the grass was too high. It was hideous. I agree.
Well, I, I would personally like to, or, you know, I would like to hold off on this until we can find some type of language to fit in here, whether or not we need to consult with a different, you know, an attorney, a farmer, or something like, look out at the other localities, Marion, Christiansburg, Blacksburg, on, on things like that. Maybe we need to do a little bit more research. I'm sorry. I know y'all worked on this, but-
I mean, it says, any person owning property. So, that applies to any, any property unless there's an exception. So, that would include alleys, but we'd still have to know who owns the alley in order to be able to have a responsible party to, to see-
No, I, I get that, ma'am. I get that, Ms. Freeman. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns? So if I'm following my, myself here at this point, we, we have a motion and a second. You and I just had a dialogue. We need a motion. So for, for town council to consider to approve an ordinance number 1424 on first and final reading, we need a motion.
I move that we adopt ordinance 1424.
A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any, any further discussion?
I would, I still would like some type, I'd like something to be looked into.
Yeah, and let me, let me just say on that. So what this is doing is fixing an unintended problem with the last one. So even if-
Exactly. I know, I know.
But even if we table this, this just, then all you've done is leave another problem from the previous ordinance in there, that we, I would suggest we go ahead and clean this one up, and then see if we can, tabling it only leaves more problems.
No, I, I, I completely understand.
Okay.
You know, but here again, it's something that I've asked time and time and time again, and I know we worked on it, but the alley is still-
Ms. Atkins, I'm trying to be respectful, but what you're suggesting, there is no language that I can write in here that is not already included to cover the situation you're talking, it's already covered. If you own the property, you-
Mr. Freeman, I fully get it, sir. I truly 100% understand.
Okay.
I do. I do.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, and this requires a roll call vote. So we'll start with Councilwoman Johnson, please.
Yeah.
Atkins, no.
Taylor, yes.
Patterson, yes.
Gilman, yes.
Thank you. Anyone? Next on the agenda is to consider ordinance number 1426, an ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 14 Taxation Article for cigarette tax and the Code of the Town of Whitfield, Virginia on first reading. And we do have a staff presentation by Mr. Freeman.
Uh, more, just a report that is in your packet, I will read it just for the benefit of our attendees. The cost of cigarettes or controlled substance administration and enforcement of cigarette taxes complex require local and state tax stamping, inventory control, and payment prior to sale. Elected cigarette taxes are a supplemental form of general fund revenue. In 2020, the General Assembly passed legislation authorizing all counties to levy tax on cigarettes, and by our methods, not allow counties to do so. Previously, only cities, towns, and two counties were authorized to levy a cigarette tax. The Town of Whitfield has a cigarette tax ordinance in 46198. In 2021, the General Assembly passed Senate Bill 1326 clarifying regional cigarette tax boards and defining cigarette, regional cigarette tax boards as a board established by a group of at least six member localities pursuant to their powers under this article, Chapter 13, Title 15.2 of the Regional Cooperation Act, with the purpose of administering local cigarette taxes on a regional basis. Later in 2021, the Mount Rogers Cigarette Tax Board was formed, and the Town of Whitfield elected to join this regional cooperative. That provides uniform administration and enforcement of local cigarette taxes on behalf of member jurisdictions. Members include Whit County, Blad County, Smith County, Yalaski County, and the towns of Whitville, Dublin, Chilhawee, Abingdon, Marion, Salt Lake, Damascus, and Old Orchard. In order to properly establish MRTCB's, MRCTB's authority to act on the town's behalf in matters related to the collection of cigarette taxes, including but not limited to monitoring and enforcement, seizure of contraband, and the collection and distribution of funds, it will be necessary to repeal and replace the existing ordinance with an ordinance that better reflects the arrangement among the Town of Whitfield, Mount Rogers Cigarette Tax Board, and the member localities. Remember, the Mount Rogers Cigarette Tax Board has provided a model ordinance for each of members, excuse me, each of the member localities. This ordinance has been reviewed by town staff, legal counsel, and the Mount Rogers Cigarette Tax Board staff, and it is our recommend, staff recommendation that the ordinance be approved on first and final reading. So this is another situation where we have a cigarette tax code in force. We've had one since 1980. When the town council elected to join the cigarette tax board, they essentially handed over the authority to, to administer our tax on behalf of the town. But this is a housekeeping item that was in process before Ms. Clayton left, and we wanted to just make sure we got it over the top. So really, really what you'll see in here are the, basically the same items that were covered in the previous ordinance, but with references now to the Mount Rogers Cigarette Tax Board, with just some minor variation. But I'm happy to try to sort out any questions you have about it. I will say that the arrangement has been working quite well. We do have a, the board does have a full-time employee, Mr. Mike Council, who's a former, I think, 20-plus-year law enforcement officer. He's a sheriff's deputy and a, and a town police officer in a couple of different localities, and he's doing a fantastic job. He has no problem being, being very strict on it and doing what is required of the position, and he's also already recovered tens of thousands in unstamped or improperly stamped cigarettes, cigarettes that were stamped for other localities, then transported here for sale, and he's doing a tremendous job.
Any questions for Mr. Freeman?
What is considered contraband?
I think, let me see here, contraband. Let me see if there's a definition for it, so I don't tell you anything wrong. We don't actually have a definition of that. I think contraband is, would be any, I, I would define it as any item that requires a cigarette tax stamp that doesn't have one. It, but I'll, let me, let me check on that. Let me check on it, because we don't, there's actually not a definition in here, and maybe there should be.
They may need to-
Yeah.
Add a definition of what contraband is.
It's a good, good question.
Any other questions for Mr. Freeman?
I don't know that contraband is actually referenced in the ordinance.
On page 61. Number 1457C. Can you speak into your mic a little bit for the minutes?
Sorry. On the, on the bottom of page 61, under Section 1457C.
It says, "Any cigarettes, vending machines, cigarette tax stamps, or other properly found in violation, property, excuse me, property found in violation of this article shall be declared contraband goods." So the definition is essentially in the regulation. So I'll read it again. "Any, any cigarettes, vending machines, cigarette tax stamps, or other property found in violation of this article." Thank you.
At this time, consideration by town council to approve ordinance number 1426, and ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 14 Taxation Article for cigarette tax of the Code of the Town of Whitfield, Virginia on first and final reading. Do I have a motion?
I move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, here none. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Gilman, please.
Gilman, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
That motion passes. Go. Next on the agenda is consideration of adopting a resolution recognizing the George Wood High School Girls Tennis Team. And Mr. Freeman, do you have a second?
Not really, Mayor Taylor. I think that the resolution itself is self-explanatory, and this is a resolution acknowledging the George Wood, uh, Blue Girls Tennis Team for their second-place finish, and I think the, the resolution will speak for itself.
And they, they were not able to be here this evening, so they are aware that we may be adopting this this evening, but they will come on June 24th, is that correct, to receive their, so, we look forward to that. They've done an excellent job.
What, I'm right there?
June.
June 24th.
Okay. I said June. Thank you. All right, so we, I think we need a motion to adopt a resolution.
I assume that we can, that we adopt the resolution recognizing the George Wood High School Girls Tennis Team.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Right here, none, but signify by saying aye.
Uh huh.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Next on the agenda is to consider the issuance of hunting permits on town-owned land on Sand Mountain. Mr. Freeman, you are on again.
Okay. Mayor Taylor, for a number of years, the town has permitted hunting on approximately half of the town's property on Sand Mountain, known as Crystal Springs Watershed. The other half is reserved for recreational purposes such as walking, biking, and hiking. The town issues a maximum of 50 hunting permits each year, when the number of, the other half, of course, is for hunting. I'm sorry, it's already been stated there. I'm getting lost here. When the number of applicants exceeds 50, the permittees are chosen by lottery, and the chosen applicants are informed of the hunting regulations in effect for this property when they are issued, when they're issued permits. In 2020, the hunting regulations were revised for Crystal Springs to mirror the requirements of the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries, that, that they had established for the adjacent Big Survey property. DGIF, Department of Game and Inland Fisheries, patrols the property, enforces these regulations, which helps us with hunter safety. There's a recommendation of staff that the permits for the 2023 hunting season be issued once again, and just a note, we, there were only 16 issued last year. So we will, we have, the council had previously approved up to 50. I don't know, has Sherry may, may be able to tell us if we've gotten over 50 before and had to go to the lottery?
We have.
Okay, but last year, there were only, there were only 16. But it is our recommendation that, that these, these permits be issued again for the 2023 hunting season.
Thank you. So it's a consideration by town council to either approve or deny the issuance of the hunting permits. Do I have a motion?
I, I have a question, but surely make a motion. How is, how is this advertising made public?
It's a good question. Sherry, can you speak to that?
We put it in the newspaper, the local newspaper, and we also put it on social media.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate you.
So we go through a motion and a second, and then we'll have any other dialogue. So we need a motion.
I move that we consider the issuance of hunting permits on town-owned land.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Right here, none. And they will signify by saying aye. Aye, as well. Any opposed? That motion passes. Citizens bearing.
Aye.
Do what? Oh, do you want a recess? Does anybody need a recess?
I don't think, I don't think they're going to do it.
We don't usually.
It's, it's a place-
So first, first on the agenda is Ms. Leonard. You come up first. You're first.
I have a general question.
You come up first. Name and your address one more time, please.
Donna Leonard, 530 East Monroe Street. My first public hearing. So the public doesn't get to say anything at public hearings? You never addressed us. I just want to know in the future, after, like, when we were going through all of these things, should I have just stood up and said, I have a question? Or would, or, I mean, I thought maybe, because at one time you said something about, does the public have anything to say? And then after that, we weren't asked, so I didn't know whether I, I could say anything. There are certain things that are public hearings, that we have to open, then we hear any, you know, dialogue from up there, and then close. Yeah, I'm not sure we were aware. So we have two of those on this whole agenda. Then the rest of it is just dialogue. And any time, I'm sure we- So A, B, C, D, E, F, G were all public hearings? Could I have said anything about those items? No, they weren't all. Oh, okay. I think it needs to be made clear which ones are, and, and when we can say something, definitely just, okay, it's time to say something, because I, we just got- Yeah, so, you know, like- So if I have something to say now, can I say something? Yeah, you're in citizens' time, so- Okay. Well, this is not really why I'm here, but I'd like to- If you'd let me know what dialogue, because I open a public hearing and ask if anybody has any questions, and then- Yeah, but me not ever coming to a public hearing, I don't think the public knows how to act at a public hearing. I think we need to be led. Or, thank you, thank you. Okay. I just want to know, in the budget area, how much do we feel like, do we, did anybody say, how much do we feel like we're getting from the increase in the meals tax that's going in effect next week? Right? Is that considered in there?
I'm sure I answered the question.
The meals tax that increases next week. Do we, do we feel like, how much, how much do you feel like we're going to be getting from that? Has anybody said anything about? Okay. Just, just wondering. I know everybody's considering, you know, it's going up, and we just, I was just wondering how much we thought maybe that was going to bring in.
Just to be clear, it does not, and maybe you know this, but doesn't, this is not the same as grocery tax.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, just the meal tax. I just, I'm just wondering. Um, okay. Now, the really reason, the real reason I'm here. Donna Leonard, 530 East Monroe Street. I've been here before. Thank you for this flashing sign. Thank you for this flashing sign, for the speed. Nobody pays attention to it when it is operational. So I'm here to maybe talk about some more issues. I heard somebody say one day, "Well, why don't you consider moving"? Well, why don't you consider moving? Why don't you consider moving? Why don't you sell your house and consider moving? Just think about that. I just thought that was ridiculous for somebody to say that. This house has been in my generation, has been in my family for generations, and it's going to continue to stay in my family for generations. I have a life estate there. I will take my last breath there. I hope my last breath will not be here asking for something to be done. It's not going to be a highway, and I don't know what we're going to do. We've got to come to some conclusions here. Put a stop sign at every intersection, sure. Speed bumps, sure. Rumble strips, sure. Don't believe, and I will look everybody in the, I do not believe that we cannot get a stoplight at Peppa's Ferry Road.
There is a stoplight.
No, Cove and Peppa's Ferry. There is not a stoplight at Cove and Peppa's Ferry. That would be good. I think also, consider maybe slowing people down before they get to Monroe Street. So you're getting there, you're getting there, you're getting there, you're just tooling along, the light's green, you don't see the flashing sign, and there we are. So do something above Monroe Street on Peppa's Ferry. Do something at some other intersections. Patrol it more often. When I was growing up in the 70s, I know things are different, but we got taught how to drive by the police. If you rolled through a stop sign, you got a ticket. If you had loud mufflers, you got a ticket. If you swayed in and out, you got a ticket. Not only on Monroe Street, but just the driving and the speed in this town is insane, just everywhere. I'm sorry, just everywhere it's insane. But I live there, and I will be here until we can figure a way. I hope, and I'm not overstepping by saying, I hope none of these businesses are being overlooked. And I'll name them. Camret Logistics, R&amp;R Septic, and Litton Landscaping. You give them a ticket every single day. You could give them a ticket every single day. Unfortunately, also, whoever was driving the town trash truck that was empty today about 10:15 a.m., you could have given him a ticket. And it's not an issue to where, like, okay, well, thank you for having radar there about two months ago at 4 a.m. in the morning. I appreciate that, but you're not going to get banged for your buck at 4 a.m. in the morning. If it's an issue of staff, then that's where we need to start. If we don't have enough police officers, put one there. I mean, cannot a police officer be told that day, "You will be on traffic today"? Well, you're going to get a call to go somewhere else. Well, this is just like a call. This is me asking for a policeman because I have a problem. Is that not just as important as another call you might get or something? If we need more staff, if you start writing some tickets, you're going to get some more income. Come to my house and park in front of my red truck one day, have your lunch, roll down your window, and see if you don't get your hair blown off of your face. Park there any day you'd like, anytime. Well, I don't know, they might slow down about 2 o'clock, but then about 3, when, you know, it's going to, it's going to go up again today. I was going down to cross the street to get with Kirk and Nancy to walk over here today, and 10 minutes. Now, you think, oh, she's lying to me. I am not lying to you. 10 minutes for me to even cross the street because it's going, whoosh, 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 whoosh. Nobody cares. So anyway, I hope y'all care. And, you know, just whatever we can do. If I don't have the ideas, surely to God, somebody's got some ideas. Put a four-way stop, 7th, 5th, all of them. Why can the traffic be slow on Main Street for those two or three blocks, but not Monroe Street?
Part of, part of the challenge with that is the functional classification of the road designated by VDOT. Main Street does not have the, I don't think has the same functional classification as Spring and Monroe.
It has a 25 mile per hour speed limit. I don't care about function. 25 miles per hour on Main is the same as 25 miles per hour on Monroe.
I understand, but I'm sorry, I responded to the context of putting stop signs on every block. The functional classification does matter when you're talking about stopping people on every block. What I would suggest is, how about Chief Hatch and I, perhaps the lieutenant, schedule a meeting with you all and sit down and, and talk about it? You don't want to do that?
No, no, I will, but what I'm saying is.
I think it would.
If I'm going to have a negativity here before we get into it, I can go a lot of places in town where there is not a lot of traffic, and there are four-way stops, three and four in a row, three and four in a row. Now, if that, we can get them there, why can't we have them on Monroe Street?
Well, I was trying to explain that.
The function of Monroe Street cannot. Well, then we need to change the functional classification. That is a residential area. We've got kids, I mean, can I put a sign up? That's another question. As my sign's not going to be nice. I don't care if we have 15 signs like Hee Hall used to have, you know, on that road.
And Ms. Leonard, you have, you've had, you've been here numerous times, haven't you, on the speed?
Over a year.
Right. I understand.
And I couldn't come, you know, like, I couldn't come January through April, obviously.
No, no, that's.
Yeah, but I come as often as I can, but it shouldn't be, you know, that I have to come so often.
Is, is there a certain time, and I don't know if Chief Hatch can answer this, or Mr. Freeman, but, and I know we've talked about speeding before, is there a certain speed of writing tickets like by law, or is it like three or four over? I'm not really familiar with that.
About law, no. You write somebody, so we didn't write just about everybody.
That's fine.
We have officers that set, sets up, and they're setting working stationary radar. People must see the cars, and they really know it. And we do a speed study, too, and it indicates, you know, which cars are going faster than others, and the numbers are down.
Well, down is good, but I want them eradicated.
What about, do we have a, do we have a type of police vehicle that may not have lights on top, say, for instance, another vehicle that may not be marked, or, you know, maybe the investigator car or something like that, that maybe could sit there and try to help some? I just didn't know, or a truck, I don't know what type of vehicles we have.
So just, just, if I could recount, recount the things that have been done, and I understand not satisfactory to you all, but just to make sure we understand that it's not been a year with no action.
Well, I didn't say there has been no action. I'm saying that we need tons more action, tons.
And so we did, we did purchase the radar indicator signs and installment. We've done multiple speeds by studies, which you would have no idea that you were being captured in this study. We have, we have data on several, several days of data on traffic counts, number violators, all that. I'd love to sit down and share that with you all.
No, I see it daily. I don't need the data. I need it stopped, so I don't know how.
Okay.
But I need it stopped. I don't know how, but I want it discussed, and I want it acted upon.
I think, being a citizen, I have empathy with what you're saying, and I think that we need to try to work with you all. You pay taxes. We need to work with you all as best as we can to try to make some changes. I certainly know that Chief Hatch is not hard to work with, and I know that he would be willing to help out as, as much as he can.
What's our next step?
Given.
What's our next step?
I would like to arrange a meeting with you all and talk about it, to go over some of these things, if you're willing. And Ms. Leonard, please don't take it that I'm negative, I'm realistic, and I know that we have taken action. I know what the data says, and the data does matter, because when you're standing beside the street, you're not, take this, I'm not going to question the radar detector versus my eyes and what, you know what I'm saying? The data is relevant.
Yes, but that was just that one specific time, that's just a blip on the radar. I'm telling you, I stood there for 10 minutes and not anyone was going the speed limit. Whereas, how does that reflect the data? I don't know. I don't want to speak data, I want to speak action. I don't care about court. I want tickets written, whether, whether they pay them or whether they fight them in court. That's not our responsibility.
May I ask a question? I know recently, I guess they, it looks like they put a daycare there on that corner. I think there's a little daycare.
Well, on one of the corners.
Yeah. I didn't know if there may be some type of something possibly looked into, since there's daycare and children, and not a crosswalk sign or anything like that, but if there would be, able to be, since there is a daycare there and children, maybe a stop sign closer on.
Maybe says children are playing?
Well, I mean, that, that. Probably, maybe, but I just don't know if that would help either. I'm just thinking.
No, nobody's going to pay attention to signs. We need action. Signs are great, that would be great, that would be absolutely wonderful, but even a stop sign there is not going to help, is not going to keep the people coming off of Peppa's Ferry Road slowing down at all. So I would be glad to meet with y'all.
I think that would be a good place to.
I will have to obviously look at calendars, but I'm going to have to try to pull together three police officers myself, probably Public Works and Engineering. This is not just an enforcement issue. We have to look at it.
I think it's a very big enforcement issue.
I understand, I appreciate it, but I'm going to have to look at schedules and.
Just don't tell me it's not an enforcement issue. That's what we've got to do, enforce it.
What I'm saying is it's not solely an enforcement, the soft solutions you're offering are financial solutions, their traffic control solution. I'm going to talk to engineers, Public Works people, and police departments. It's not just a one.
The more we have onboard, the better.
So I'm not going to be able to give you a date and a time sitting here, but I'd like to coordinate with you and come up with one that working with staff to figure out what.
Okay. Well, it has to work for us, too.
Certainly, of course.
Mr. Freeman, can I ask a question? Is there any way that maybe there could be some, looked into the matter of maybe some speeding tickets if, if needed?
Certainly, Chief Hatch and I will talk.
Okay. Thank you.
It would be like shooting fish in a barrel.
Taylor, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is Mr. Chamberlain. Did you come up? You said you wanted to speak. Yes, if you said your name and your address for the minutes, please, sir.
My name is Kirk Chamberlain, 495 East Monroe Street. I wanted to speak to the same subject, the speeding. I, I'm glad that you're welcome, you welcome a conversation, and maybe at that point, I can bring up some data from other communities. I've lived several places that have the same kind of issue, and it's, as Donna says, it's pretty important. And I've, I've, I've been told that we don't have enough police to enforce it. Okay, well, how about, what kind of a community do you want to have in the future? Do you want to see kids be able to walk to school and ride bicycles or anything? I mean, this is part of the whole thing, as far as, if you want a civilized community in the future, you have to be bike-friendly and pedestrian-friendly, and when you see rampant disregard for the law, it kind of gives a message. You can give tickets all day long. I think the slowest I saw the R&amp;R sewage truck go by was when he was being towed. He goes by here for about 40, 50 miles an hour every morning, but we have several commercial vehicles at speed, including school buses, and I know they're on our schedule and everything, but would it be helpful if you draw, if you don't have enough police to enforce the speed, draw on the state police, the county police? Even Virginia Department of Transportation has certain guidelines, they, they can monitor the speeds of the, the commercial vehicles.
I was thinking, we, I was thinking, unless I'm wrong, because I know we worked on trying to get the police back up to have it close to full staff, unless we'd lost one or two, but I think, I think from my understanding, we're back to par. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a police issue anymore of staffing.
That was, at one point, a very.
At one point, it was, we were way behind, yes.
We were down six of 28 unit officers, so, you know, quarter of the department's missing.
So maybe if we put a bite in that, you know, when people, I, I know places that I've been, that it's a serious infraction, and it goes away when it's in your pocketbook. I know I've been told also that a commercial driver, it's going to affect his, his job, so they're, they're reticent to affect somebody's job. Everybody's kind of tense and a hurry. A FedEx man, I had a conversation with a FedEx man this morning, and from his perspective, it's the same, you know? It isn't just a couple of people, you know, complaining about the speeders. The commercial guys have the same thing. The flagmen that were down there said how they get blown off all the time. So it's, a lot of people are kind of frustrated by this. Anyway, I don't think, if I can help with suggestions, whatever we can do, it'd be nice. You can have the police sit on my porch if you want. And anyway, thanks for, and I look forward to talking to you.
Mr. Freeman, do you want somebody to give a telephone number or an address or something?
I think I have email address for Mr. Chamberlain for sure. Ms. Leonard, do you want, if you want to give me one, you don't have to say it into my, yeah. If you want to stick it to that one.
Okay, okay. You can reach me at choice580@gmail, C-H-O-R-C-E 580 at gmail. You can text me at 276-617-1724.
Sorry, I started, 276.
617-1724. Thank you.
Any other questions, ma'am?
All right. Well, next on the citizens' agenda is Mr. Mike Stevens.
I want to say thank you to the council for your support of the 92nd Annual Trade Association Conference that was held last week. It was an honor to have five of you and Mr. Freeman there, and I want to commend the Meeting Center staff for helping me put everything together. And I just want to say thank you, and I just have a little gift here of things that we had from our conference, and it's just a small clue to say thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad it was a success all around.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Y'all have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Appreciate that. All right, new business. New business. Next, we go to reports. Now, Amanda Bryan Freeman.
Thank you. Now, this will be very brief, there are just a few thank yous here. I'd like to just say thank you to the folks from the With Arts Council, a member of our Public Works Department, folks who did the planning for Chautauqua, anyone who helped with that, our police and EMS personnel, fire EMS personnel who helped provide security for the event. I know it was, there were countless hours put into the planning of that, and I know while it's not a town event, we do lend a lot of support to it and certainly appreciate their efforts. It was quite a rainy week, and I don't think the festival was what most of those folks would have hoped, but I think we still owe them a debt of gratitude for all the work that went into it, nonetheless. With the rainy weather, there's often an uptick in emergency medical services calls, so I did check with emergency folks last week. They did tell me that they were quite busy with, with lots of accidents. I don't have data for you, but just want to thank those folks, police, fire, EMS, for, for the work that they do when we have challenging weather conditions. I'd also like to take a second to piggyback on what Mr. Stevens said, and thank Mike for, for showing Withfull so well. Mike and the folks at the Meeting Center, Mike's Planning Committee with other treasurers and treasurer's offices, and then also with his staff, did a tremendous job of showing Withfull well. I was able to, fortunate with you all to attend the awards banquet. I believe there were 300 folks that night, and I, and I, from what I could tell, everyone was having a very good time, indicated that they had a very good visit to Withfull, and I think some of them were quite surprised at what Withfull has to offer, so thank you to Mike, to Angela, Dar, Amanda, Janet, for, for being, being that great host, and thank you to the Meeting Center staff and all that is involved. I believe PD may have helped with some chauffeuring and some other things, so just thank you to everyone for making that a successful event, for showing Withfull. That's all I have.
Moving forward on the business, well, upcoming meetings, first with Town Clerk Sherry Corbin, and then she's going to go over that, and then she'll just go right on any committees and board, thank you. committees and board vacancies.
Just a couple of upcoming meetings. The town Withfull Municipal Offices will be closed on all services curtailed on Tuesday, July 4th, in observance of the Independence Day holiday. And the next regular meeting of the Withfull Town Council will be held at 5:00 PM on Monday, July 10th during the council chambers. Everyone has in their package a listing of the upcoming committee vacancies. As you can see, we have a couple of people on the Building Code Appeals Board, Dennis Mail and Liam Turner, the FERC. They both have expressed a desire to be reappointed and they're in the process of doing their paperwork. We have two of the youth members on the REIT Commission that have expired and neither are eligible for reappointment. So, we'll need to look for a few of the youth members. And then the next one is Ms. Jean Lester on the Will Burke Jackson Umberger Homestead Museum Advisory Board, and she is not eligible for reappointment. We've had a few people express interest about that. But if anyone would like to apply, then we just need to go to the town Withfull website and find the open door portal.
I'm sure refreshing my memory. How, when is the time that we, we bring them all in? I mean, is it a certain time that, you know, if you have one applicant or five applicants?
Yes, yes. So, what we try to do, you know, if we have a lot of people, you know, that we see are applying, we try to put a deadline on it to let people know when would be the last day to apply and then bring them before the council.
So, like, if something is not until, like, August, I mean, do we wait to just before that time and get applications? Or do you get one application or do we vote on it?
Well, normally, you know, we would give, we would start telling you like I'm telling you now. And then, again, we would give you, like, probably two weeks before the meeting to accept application and then bring it to you. So, we can give them feel before the expiration date is what we try to do.
Any questions for Ms. Corbin? All right, we're gonna slip into council person time. We're gonna start with Mr. Gilman.
Brian, I have a question. Is there anything that we can do about the drainage problem that was put in?
Uh, I'll- Maybe. Yeah. Let me, let me get the Public Works staff and Engineering and see what can be done.
Okay.
I'm gonna add that, you know, there, there is possible potential in August for Virginia Tech, one of the classes is coming over to, to, with downtown Withfull. And they contacted them. And they're, they're gonna do a, a little study on our connectability and our walkability and our parks. And they have a, a, a big interest in, in water management and water issues. So, whether or not they're coming, that, that's, if we could keep our fingers crossed and hope that they do, that would be, that would be really neat thing.
Since that sort of a question, since it sort of flows downhill, is there any way that, I know we've talked about the one up near the hospital, all that sort of erosion. Can we go, can we start up and then come down since it sort of maybe creates a, a backflow? Is that, that's something-
I think what Gary and Mayor Taylor are talking about is actually standing water. I don't think you're talking about string erosion, are you? So, I think they're two different.
Okay. Well, I mean-
Or two different-
Well, if, if they're here, if it's a possibility, maybe we can make mention of it to them to see since, or, you know, I don't know.
Well, it's a classroom and the students and they'll be breaking up. So, whatever their studies are, I guess, I don't, I guess that would be the way to do it, what they're, what they've already picked out, what they're gonna do. I don't know if-
So, they've already picked out what they're gonna do, maybe?
Well-
I think we'd have to ask Todd that. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we just need to touch base with, with them and see what, what's really-
Maybe we can throw, I mean, just ask, just inquire.
Sure.
Because I know that's a continual problem, I think. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Nothing right now, but reserve the right to come back.
Ms. Atkins?
Uh, I would, well, I think Mr. Freeman and Mr. Stevens stole my note. I was gonna thank Mr. Stevens and his staff, the Withfull Meeting Center, and everybody that had parts and had taken into the Treasure Association. Thank you. Great job. I'd also like to thank Public Works and whoever took care of the issue down in the room, down at, before Chautauqua with Arts Council. That room looked phenomenal, and I appreciate that. Whenever, I think they did whatever it took to get the job done, just in the nick of time. And I really appreciate that. I know probably have some of them mad at me, but I apologize. I also just want to throw this out there. I'd like to see if the council would consider giving off July 3rd, Monday, to the employees, give them extra long, a little bit break, just as a thank you. I'd like to try to, to bring that up, if that's okay, if we can consider that. Let me check my phone. Hold on one second. Let me just, hold on, because sometimes I put some on my, I put them on here to, let me just double check if anything else I'm missing. Just a second. I think that's about it.
I don't, I don't know how to handle that July 3rd. Do we vote on it? Or do we put that management's hands or?
Can I make a motion? Is that how that works?
Yeah, I wouldn't leave it in my, I, I, I don't think we would have the authority to do that without your-
I'd like to motion, I'd like to make a motion for the Withfull Town Council to consider giving off July 3rd for the town employees and those that might not can take off ever. How you all would do it to just add to their time or however that works. I don't know exactly how that works.
They would, uh, any employee who could not take off on the holiday due to a schedule issue would get credited eight hours back to their leave balance.
I second Ms. Atkins' motion.
We have a motion in a second. So, is there any, like, well, you need a motion in a second. So, this is dialogue. I guess I have some questions. I mean, like, is that, do we have certain departments that just can't do it and then not await?
Police, fire, EMS, water, sewer, they-
President Office? I mean, I don't know.
Uh, probably less so. But, I mean, just your typical, what, you know, what would be classified essential personnel. But this is, you know, that's commonplace for them to be scheduled on holidays and not be able to take them. But they get credited back to eight hours. But we certainly couldn't send the police department home for a day. But we don't on Christmas either, so.
All Public Works, we work them on the third set, you have to report?
I think that they would end up, some of those folks would end up falling into that same category where they're preparing for 4th of July downtown fireworks and things like that. So, there would be people who would not be able to take it off. That is certain.
But they-
But they would get credited the eight hours of leave time, just like what we used to call a repaid holiday. Y'all remember, we did away with the repaid holiday because there were stipulations on the repaid holiday. It had to be taken within the calendar year. You had to designate what, when you were taking it on your time sheet. It became this tracking nightmare. So, we, you all did change that to make it just a straight eight hours put on your leave balance, your personal leave balance.
This is an unfair question. But what percentage of, of, of the employees would be able to take advantage of as it was put a long, relaxing weekend?
It should be all of them except for non-essential.
Well, the, the other one that this typically happens with is the, the rec center. The rec center. There, there are several holidays that the rec center is not closed. I, I can't recite them for you. But, and, and I don't know if they're closed on the 4th or not. But, you know, they're, they are definitely closed on Thanksgiving and Christmas. But I think there's a bunch of the other holidays that, that rec center doesn't close because patrons want to be in there. Fortunately, I don't know what, which ones those are. I don't know if the rec center would choose to close on the shorter notice because they will create a, a hornet's nest, possibly if they do. But-
But in all ality, every employee could take advantage of it, correct? Not, not maybe on the 3rd that they could-
They would be credited with their time served to be taken at a time, sure.
This would benefit all employees, not just a certain-
Correct, that maybe not on the 3rd itself.
You're, you're trying to give them a long weekend.
I'm, I'm not trying to give them, I just, I just think that, that that would be a great idea. I'm not giving them anything. I'm just asking.
I didn't mean it that way.
No, I didn't mean anything. I was giving them anything.
Because you have a long weekend. And, I mean, it makes sense. But then, you know, being who we are, there's, there's a lot of people who can't take it. So, they will, they'll still get the time off, but it won't be-
May not be on July 3rd.
I know. The county extended it to their employees, I believe, there both, uh, July the 3rd and the 4th.
We have to wait. Well, I don't know yet, but I'm-
Any other discussion? All right. Well, we have a motion in a second and open a discussion. So, start with Ms. Freeman Johnson. Atkins, aye. Taylor, aye.
Peterson, aye.
Y'all, aye.
All right. Do you have anything else to bring, girl?
I think that is, no, I apologize, but I think that's it. I think I've traveled on my list over here. Sorry.
Ms. Johnson, you have anything for-
I think my, what I was gonna discuss, the citizens, the citizens came and discussed it themselves. But I would like for them to be afforded an opportunity to maybe work with them, um, you know, coming up with a solution to what they seem to be as a problem. They pay taxes and they're a part of, of the community. And we need to look at, and look at the issue as well as listen to what they're saying.
Absolutely.
Can I be one? I, I know he mentioned he may bring some other ideas. And I don't know. I know sometimes we look at other ideas from other counties, surrounding areas. I don't know if anybody would have the same sort of particular issue, maybe something similar. Maybe they have some different suggestions to, to maybe want to reach out. Then it's up to you all.
Sure.
I just want to ask council if they had given any thought as to whether or not we would like to do a September 11 commemoration event for first responders, as we talked about last, I kind of threw it out there last time, and I should all think about it. So, we don't have to have any bylaw, right? Just one seat for the meeting.
One more thing before I come down.
I'll know if you're ready.
Mr. Stevens, thank you for the outstanding job. You and your employees. You all did a great job. And also, congratulations to you and with your new position. I'm sure it's exciting. But the work that you and your staff put in, you all did an amazing job. Everybody that was involved, Public Works, everybody did an outstanding job. And a lot of people that I talked to, they enjoyed coming to Withfull. So, thank you.
Any other company for council? Did I miss anything? Not we, but you all. Thank you, everybody.